Okay, Mr. Chairman, you are free to begin the meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Leek and I'm the Chair of the City County Planning Board. I now call to order the August 13th, 2020 meeting, which will be conducted remotely. Due to the state of emergency, all planning board members are participating remotely. I would now ask our Planning Director, Aaron King, to call the role.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Bryan?
Here.
Melinda Donegan?
Here.
Jason Grubbs?
Here.
Tommy Hicks?
Here.
Clarence Lamb?
Here.
Chris Leek?
Here.
Brenda Smith?
Here.
Jack Steelman?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. When there is a vote, a roll call vote will be conducted. Each board member will be recognized and asked to clarify, to clearly state their vote for the record. All guests participating in this remote meeting, either through Zoom or by phone, will remain muted until recognized by the board for comment. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13 and is also being livestreamed on the city's website. The meeting will also be replayed on TV 13 tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and Sunday at 4:00 p.m. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items of which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for his staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal, period. Once you have been recognized by the board, staff will unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. After the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the planning board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations, which are considered by the City Council or Board of Commissioners during its review of the requests. For special use district zoning requests, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. If you are addressing the board today, we would ask that before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the July 9th and July 23rd meetings. Are there any additions or correction? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval, Clarence.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second.
Second by George. All those favor?
Mr.
I'm sorry, no, we have to, we have to do the remote. All right, Mr. King, please call the role.
Yes. George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs? I didn't hear Jason.
Sorry.
Okay. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. King. That's unanimous. Thank you. Now I'm going to recognize Desmond Corley for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have a few items on the consent agenda. Then I'll wait for Amy to pull that up. Amy, if you would, please start with item B3, which is case W3450. I think that's the first case on the consent agenda for today since we have opposition. But we will be too. This is the special use request to rezone from HBS to HBS. The petitioners are requesting additional uses to the existing HBS property. This is a little over an acre at the northwest of Orchard View Drive and West Columbusville Road. Next slide, please. Here is the proposed site plan. It includes a six-foot opaque fence along the northern property boundary where there isn't one already, as well as an enhanced street yard along Orchard View Drive. One of the conditions, or an additional condition that was proposed or volunteered by the petitioners is that no additional freestanding signage would be allowed. This is essentially a parking expansion for the existing Dario Restaurant, which you can see up in the upper left corner of this site plan. Staff doesn't see that this is significantly different from the previously approved site plan, which actually had a building in the lower right corner of the same parcel. So we recommend approval of this request from the site plan requirements. I'll remind the board that for each of these items, you'll need to make one motion for consistency and another motion for your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this matter?
We have the applicant. We do not have anyone signed up in opposition.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board find that their request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is Clarence.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Steelman. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the role?
Yes. George Bryan?
Yes, in favor.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs? I couldn't, Jason, I couldn't hear you if you made him action there.
Moving out.
It's, it's, it's a little choppy.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, that was a yes. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
That passage that's found consistent unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm, I move that the planning board recommend approval of W3450. This is Clarence again.
That is motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Steelman. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the role?
Yes. George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yeah.
Okay. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is B4, which is case W3451. This is a request to rezone about five acres from LI Limited Industrial to GBL. That's general business, limited use. This is at the southeast corner of the intersection of Akron Drive and North Glen Avenue. I don't have another slide here. There is no site plan that was submitted. The applicants are requesting GB zoning for use flexibility. Some of the heavier retail uses in the UDO, like outdoor display retail, furniture store, et cetera, are not allowed in the limited industrial district. But they wanted to keep the light industrial character of the area. So some limited industrial uses are included, including manufacturing, A, bill of material supply, warehousing, and other uses like that. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, we have the applicant. We do not have anybody signed up in opposition.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is Clarence.
Thank you. That's motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Mr. King, please call the role.
Okay. George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Jason, you might have to work on your audio. It's super tough to hear you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it a little better.
Gotcha. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
All right, that's eight to zero.
We need another motion.
Another motion is?
I'm so sorry. This is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W3452. Sorry.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Steelman. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the role?
Yes. George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs? Give it one more try for Jason. We'll come back to Jason. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
And we'll come back to Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
There we go.
There we go.
Eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe I heard somebody sign up to speak in opposition for case B5. So the next item on the consent agenda is B6, which is case W3453, the request to rezone a little more than five acres from RS9 to RM8S on the west side of University Parkway, just north of Sunview Road. Next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan. It shows five apartment buildings, a total of 38 units. The overall density is 7.11 units per acre. The area plan actually recommends up to 18 units per acre for multifamily development. I've highlighted those buildings on this slide and I've shown you the zoning boundary in green. This is consistent with the area plan and staff recommends approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, we have three folks in, in support and we have no one signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Then I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board find that their request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is Clarence.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, Ms. Donegan.
I was just wondering if there was any way to get connectivity into this site. It doesn't look like it from my view, but I just wanted to ask the staff if there was any, how the parcels that around it might develop if this gets approved. That's my question.
Melinda, yes, we were concerned about the lack of connectivity with this site, particularly with the area plan recommending multifamily to the north. So we asked the petitioner to investigate a stub. The three buildings to the left, right to the right of that last one on the right was the most logical position. But as you can see from the topographic lines, there's a stream there and it just really was not feasible.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that had been investigated. So thank you.
It was. Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Bryan, can I follow up on that? On our, on our rendering in our agenda, am I missing that Arbor Ridge buildings are not showing on that?
Are you talking about on your location map, Mr. Bryan?
Yeah.
There is one large building to the north of this site. I believe it is Arbor Ridge. That, that may just not show up on your location map, but it is there.
In, in visiting that site, I noticed there were at least two stub streets in Arbor Ridge. What was the original intent in the development of that property for those stub streets?
I can't speak to the specifics. I don't think I was here when that property was zoned or developed. But generally, when stub streets are provided, the goal is to provide connectivity to neighboring development whenever it occurs.
I mean, do you have a map that is showing those stub streets that you could show to the planning board?
Amy, can you go back one slide to the location map if you have that?
Should be on the area.
So it's Arbor View Lane that George is referencing. So you can see, you know, the Arbor Ridge, the large senior living facility there. Arbor View Lane is a public street that stubs to the east and to the west. To the west, we've got a stream there. So I don't, I don't know how much connectivity that will ultimately provide. But I think certainly the connection or the stub to the east was intended to provide a little bit of connectivity to that pocket that's bound between Ziegler Road and University Parkway. And it kind of gets hemmed in further south by US 52. So in that case, I think we felt the topography was suitable enough that the stubs would work. I think as Desmond mentioned, or Gary rather, mentioned on this case, the topography and the small nature of this site made that more challenging.
That, the road coming off of Arbor View, is that also a public street?
No, that's a private street.
So Maple is, Maple whatever it is, that's too small for me to read here, is not a public street?
Correct.
Maplefield. Okay. Okay. And then the other question is, do we have DOT at present?
Yes.
I noticed that in the description of the future for University, there was to be a raised island in the middle of that. What's, what's the intention? We have, we have a lot of traffic. I don't know how many units are down Sunview that pull into University right there, and that's within feet of this entrance. I, we're setting ourselves up for bad traffic there. It looked like University was going to have a raised median. Is that correct? And we can go ahead and vote if you want to, then have discussion, Mr. Chair. I, I don't know where the appropriate place is to insert this discussion.
Well, there still is a previous motion on the floor, so.
Do you want to go ahead and get that motion out of the way and then continue with this discussion? Or the, or get a second motion in there as well?
How, how about?
A motion yet.
Yeah, I don't, how about let's finish your discussion first?
Okay. Okay.
So you still have the floor.
Yes. So, Mr. King, I'm asking, what is the, the future plans of University at where, where both Sunview and this proposed drive for 38 units will, will intersect with University?
I see Jeff Fanzler with Winston-Salem DOT has joined us. I know we asked him to join today's meeting because there were traffic concerns with Arbor Acres. Jeff, if you're able, if you're there and you have any knowledge of that, certainly feel free to chime in. What I can, what I can start by saying is, the comment that you see in the staff report is basically, whenever we fill out that section, we go to the comprehensive transportation plan. We identify the road segment. The, each road segment has a designated cross section. For this one, it was a boulevard. And so the standard definition for a boulevard is what you were referencing, George, the, the raised median and all the things that are described in the staff report. That, that's kind of a generic description of what boulevards anywhere within the, the plan, plan boundaries are. I would, I would defer to Jeff if he's got any more specific information with respect to this site.
Thank you, Aaron. Yes, I do. So, Mr. Bryan, to answer your question, the median, there is a median proposed on University Parkway. However, I do not think it goes quite that far. I'd have to get the plans and verify that. Let me tell you why. Because NC DOT has a project to widen and improve Haynes Mill Road, and it includes improvements at the intersection of Haynes Mill and University. Some of those improvements are median divided and then some redesign of the intersection. So medians that would extend both north and south on University. We've looked at those plans, but it has been some time. And I did not think, if my memory serves me well, that it does reach that far up. Unfortunately, the way this parcel is laid out, it just has small access into the site, and it's just the proximity of where that is. But I do not think that the median does come up that far. But I tend to agree with you. There's likely going to be a little bit of issue at that location. But as far as the median plans, I do not think they come up that far.
Well, and this relates to a later case, too. We don't have much influence over you at DOT down there, Mr. Fanzler. But is there some way to anticipate that before we approve this case? That we somehow can get them to adjust that entrance? Or it, it is, it's difficult for even the people coming in. That's, that's a huge apartment complex coming in off Sunview. And it's difficult to take a left onto University that, at that location. Fortunately, most people are turning right. But is there some way to work with the owner of this property before we go ahead and approve this?
I guess to answer that question, it's, it's a matter of really not so much working with the homeowner that, or the property owner, excuse me, as it would be to maybe working with NC DOT in the, in the project to see what we can do to incorporate some safety improvements with the larger NC DOT project. Combining Sunview and maybe this parcel access is going to be problematic because there's other parcels involved that are unrelated to the site and are anything that's going on with what we're hearing of this particular case today. So there's some conflict there as far as coordinating that. I think where the opportunity lies is coordinating egress and access with the NC DOT project for a safety concern. And they're early on in the design plan, so that's still a possibility. It's just, at this stage of the game, probably not likely to do anything with the actual development as before you today.
So there would be no advantage to requiring this developer to have a stub towards some of the other areas that may be developed in the future so that there would be some off-road circulation?
Well, absolutely. And that was what, if, you know, Gary hinted to that a little bit earlier. We had, we had asked that we try to do some, some stub streets in here. There's some topography issues that really limit access and what's actually constructible on the site. So we're, we're bound by not only a, a narrow frontage of University Parkway, but also some topographic issues that are challenging interior to the site as far as a stub street.
Okay, I don't know if we're being creative enough on this one, folks.
Okay.
George, there's a requirement for the left turn lane in the conditions. So is that sort of addressed what your concerns are possibly?
You know, that, that really doesn't solve the left turn to do something there. I mean, I, I did this, I went into that, into Sunview twice. And getting out and turning left, you sort of risk your life getting into the middle lane and then trying to get on up with, you know, traffic moving 45 miles per hour. And, and again, we're adding more traffic right there to it. So I just think, long range, this, I like the development. I don't have a problem with the development. I think just, there is, there is a cul-de-sac just behind Arbor View where an easy stub could be put. There's some other places like that. I just, I just don't know whether transportation and planning staff have looked at that.
This is Aaron. And to kind of just piggyback on what, what Gary mentioned earlier, yeah, I think we did. And, and I think certainly we are advocates of connectivity and we wanted to see if there was a way to do that. And so that was our first ask. I, I think the challenge on this site, George, is the configuration and the long and narrow shape of that. So if you think of that site, and you've got to take that very narrow piece of land and, and get it graded enough so it's flat so that you can have parking, drive aisles, buildings on there. And I, and obviously, as we know, that, that land is far from flat now. So if you, if you see the grade contours on that site plan, they're pretty steep on the edges just to get the, the developable area flat. That's, that's really the challenge is you get around that western and northern edge is, is the grade you're having to get down to, to make, to make that flat developable area. And that's the, that's the rub on getting those stubs to the, to the north, really. That, that's the real challenge.
Aaron, if I could add a comment, what we have before us obviously is shown in the yellow lines. That's the boundary of the subject property. The petitioners do have control over the remaining portion of that LB zoned lot that includes a house that fronts on University Parkway. That's, again, not part of the, of the request. But if that was to be the access point at that northern edge of that property, instead of the southern edge, which is closer to Sunview, perhaps that would help some. But again, we really kind of have to work with what has been submitted. I don't know if that helps or not.
That doesn't seem particularly, well, again, my, my, I'm not unhappy with the development. I'm just unhappy with the developer not coming up with a way for connectivity. And that's, that's where I'm stuck with this one.
So, Mr. King, it sounds like that there, that there's some more work that needs to be done with the developer maybe, but there is a previous motion on the floor. So I want to honor that motion. So we have a motion, if, if Mr. Bryan has completed his.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any, any further discussion? Or, Mr. King, would you please call the role?
I will. And remember, this is, we started this a while ago. This is the, the action on the consistency piece. So George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend approval of W3453. This is Clarence.
Have a motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Ms., by Ms. Smith. Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the role?
Yes. George Bryan?
No.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, that was seven in favor, one against. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in real quick, if, if you don't mind, we, I think, can circle back to item B5, and that's zoning case W3452. I, I think what we have learned is one of the folks that originally signed up in opposition and had some questions has now changed to being in support of that case. So we actually have two people in support and are rather observing and no one in opposition. So if you're comfortable, we can go back and handle that item on the consent agenda.
I'm very comfortable. Let's, let's do that, Mr. Corley, please.
All right. Then item B5 is case W3452. A request to rezone from RS9 in MUS to MUS 2 Phase. It's 16.7 acres at the intersection of Old Greensboro Road and US 158 or Reesboro Road. The applicants are requesting to remove some uses on the previously approved special use plan, uses like hospice and palliative care, restaurant without drive-through service, et cetera, and to add other uses like planned residential development and child daycare center. No new buildings are proposed, nor are there any significant use changes. Before you is the site plan. I have outlined the Phase 1 property in light blue and then kind of shaded in the Phase 2, which is currently proposed, mostly undeveloped. There are some existing houses on the property, but they're not proposing any development in that Phase 2 area right now. The circle that you see on the screen, I highlighted an access drive onto Harvest Drive, which, if you recall from the Trosa rezoning petition last year, we had asked them to close that driveway. With this particular case and the way that the development is proposed, buyer and life safety had concerns about their ability to provide services to the backside of the buildings on this plan that are proposed for a daycare. So that driveway needed to remain. They have proposed that the entire area be gated and access to that driveway will only be granted via the Knox Box on that gate. This is consistent with the area plan. The site plan meets all UDO requirements. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Mr. King, do we have anyone here to speak on this matter, just to be sure?
I look back in and we still have Mr. Sheerburn, who is the applicant, and. and Mr. Nazam, who I think is a, he is listed as an observer, observer guest there. So we don't have anyone signed up in opposition.
Thank you, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
That was second by Mr. Steelman, any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryant.
Yes.
Jason, Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero.
And Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence again. I move that the planning board recommend approval of W 3452.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Lamb and second by Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Hicks, who was that, I'm sorry?
It was Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks, all right, any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryant.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero.
Okay, now we are done with the public hearing items. So the next item on the consent agenda is item C1, which is a planning board review 2020 04. I'm not seeing consent presentation anymore.
Just give me one moment.
Okay. All right, thank you, Amy. This planning board review is a request for the substation in RS20 zoning district on a little more than 13 acres. This actually has split jurisdiction. The rear of the site or the north, the northern portion of the site where the substation would be constructed is in the Prescott County zoning jurisdiction. And the front portion or the southern portion of the site is in the zoning jurisdiction of the town of Kernisville. The site plan meets, Amy, if you go to the next slide, slide. The site plan meets all the UDO requirements. Again, we do have a split jurisdiction issue. So the, one of the conditions of approval that we have proposed is that developers will be required to obtain all necessary approvals from the town of Kernisville before we will issue any permits. Staff recommends approval of this plan.
And this, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second, Mr. Bryant.
Second by Mr. Bryant, any discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryant.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. The next case is, I'm sorry, the next item is C2, which is planning board review 2020 05. This is a request for 10 single-family residential units on 1.18 acres of the southeast corner of East 9th Street and Angelo Brothers Avenue. Amy, if you go to the next slide, this is the site plan for 9th Q. Essentially, the reason that the board is reviewing this plan, as you can see, the Phase 1 is all on a public street. The board wouldn't typically need to review that. But the use residential building, single-family, does require planning board review in the entertainment district, which is where this property is located. The site plan meets all UDO requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Steelman, any discussion?
I've got one question, please.
All right.
Would someone please explain what is meant by elevated, single-family dwelling?
Mr. Steelman, my understanding is, from previous discussions that we've had with the applicant, is that they're, the, the building may be placed on stilts, I guess, for lack of a better word. And there would be space underneath for parking or storage or whatever the, the owner or tenant needed to use the space for. But the living area would be elevated above the ground level.
Do you by chance know if it'll be enclosed or open air like at the beach?
I do not know.
Okay.
So, this is Mr. Bryant. So we, they're not required to show elevations for the review with the planning board?
You can't review elevations for single-family homes.
Okay, even.
State statute.
This is sort of a different situation in the entertainments.
Well, no, that's, yeah, I mean, that's basically residential building and single-family homes don't have, there are no standards, architectural standards. You can't review the architecture of a single-family home, and that's by state statute unless it's in a historic overlay or stuff like that.
Yeah, I, this is odd because of the entertainment district and, and this aspect of it, the requirement anyway. Yeah, thank you.
All right, there's a motion as second, any, any further discussion? If not, Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryant.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
Okay, that's eight to zero. And Mr. Chairman, before we begin the discussion on item C3, which will be your next consent item, I believe Mr. Grubbs may need to recuse himself from this discussion, and I'll let him speak to that.
I do, that's correct, I've got a conflict of interest.
All right. Without objection, that's fine, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the consent agenda is C3, which is planning board review 2020 06. This is an alternative compliance request for the Colladium Downtown on 1.18 acres at the intersection of West 3rd Street and Town Run Lane. They are requesting alternative compliance specifically for the transparency requirements in the Winston Overlay District. And if you go to the next slide, the image that you see, the primary image, is the western elevation where they are requesting alternative compliance. The WO district requires that the ground level of buildings within the district contain at least 50% transparency. As you can see, the western elevation doesn't meet that requirement for a number of reasons. One of them being that the elevation of Town Run Lane decreases as you travel to the west. So if you start on 3rd Street and walk towards 2nd Street, the elevation goes down pretty significantly, and it's difficult to maintain transparency across that entire elevation. One of the, one of the things is, you can see on the perspective drawing down in the lower right-hand corner, is that this building is actually oriented toward two public amenities. The one that you see in, in that drawing, the left hand, is Liberty Plaza, which is a public park, and then on the other side of 3rd Street is Marshall Park or Marshall Plaza, which is another public park. These are, even though the building fronts on two public streets, these are actually what we would consider to be the fronts of the building, the, the portions of the building that are necessary to have pedestrian engagement at the ground level. And on those two elevations, the northern elevation and the eastern elevation specifically, they actually provide as much or more than the required transparency. So we think that this request is reasonable, and we recommend approval of the alternative compliance.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence, I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Steelman, any discussion?
Yes. Mr. King, can you address whether this would meet the requirements of what we're looking at with the master street scape plan later on in this agenda?
Well, so there's sort of two different kind of issues there. One is really, what we're talking about with this is the WO, the Winston Overlay District, and that is really specific to, to building placement and really kind of street-level architecture. And that's really the focus of what is before you with this request. What we're going to be coming to later on the agenda, the downtown street scape master plan, that the, the whole, the main focus of that plan is really what happens in our downtown between building walls. So in the public realm, so that, that plan doesn't necessarily get too much into building architecture. That Winston Overlay District is really the regulatory tool that, that deals with that.
Okay, another question. In, in looking at the Plaza, or Park, I guess, we're calling it a park now, that's, that's going to be up on, between 3rd and 4th, is Town Run the recommended way that people will go through the back areas to, to connect up to the greenway?
I, I think that's certainly a way, and then certainly Marshall Park, you know, just preliminary designs allow for that to take place through the park itself for more of kind of a winding, kind of leisurely way to do it. So either one of the two would.
Yeah, but as you go south from Marshall to, to the more laid-out areas of that, isn't Town Run access?
Yes, essentially will serve that purpose, yes.
I, I guess, I, I mean, I love the design of the Colladium building. Somebody's got a phone going on. But, but what we also have is a very tall building, very close to the sidewalk. We've already allowed a parking lot on the other side. This building is taking up more of Town Run than the Sheriff's Department is. I, I think we need some kind of commitment to either make this road better with Colladium, to make this road, I don't know, planted with, I'm having a problem hearing, I'm sorry. Can you, somebody?
Yeah, I think maybe one of the board members might have, if somebody's got a phone ringing, please go ahead and mute your Zoom feed.
Okay, isn't there a way to get the, the developers of the Colladium to do some kind of softening of Town Run Lane with plantings or something like that? I don't, I don't think we're being creative enough. We, we do not need to create an alley as part of the greenway going over there. We've got some very creative architects with this building. I don't think we've tried hard enough to soften that side of the building when we already know that we've got a parking lot on the other side. We've got the parking lot down at the bottom. If, if we're going to just make this alley, then we're doing a disservice to city planning.
So George, what I would say, if you're interested, I believe Adam Sebastian, who was one of the lead architects with Stitch Design, has joined us this afternoon. And if you'd like to hear Adam's, some of the, the discussion, we've, we've been working with these guys probably since right after the holidays. If you'd like to hear from Adam, some of the thoughts that kind of go into that, that facade that runs along Town Run Lane, he is, if you'd like, he can unmute himself and maybe provide a little bit of insight on that, if that would be helpful.
Maybe that would help, yeah.
Great.
Adam, if you're with us, please go ahead and unmute yourself. And if you'd like to address those comments.
Thanks, Aaron, and I'd be happy to, George. The, I certainly understand the pause there along Town Run Lane. We, we had the same reaction to it when we were starting the early designs for Colladium. The problem that we've run up against is Town Run Lane, as it sits now, the sidewalk on the east that abuts the property that Colladium will go on, were required to build to the property line as per the zoning and the Winston Overlay. That sidewalk currently is a little less than six feet. That gave us some heartburn, and we've had some preliminary conversations with Aaron, with folks at the city, about what are the opportunities in decreasing the width of Town Run Lane so that the sidewalk that is adjacent to Colladium can be wider? And our thinking there is if we are able to skinny up the driveline of Town Run, we would be able to get roughly a 10-foot sidewalk along the side of Colladium that would allow our design team to introduce street trees and landscaping to that edge that allows it to be much more pedestrian-friendly and more in line with the extension of the strollway. We very much want that to be a component of the strollway, and in many cases, we want that to enhance the visitors to Winston-Salem as they go up and down the strollway from Old Salem up to Marshall Park. So we are very much on board with thinking creatively as to how we can do that. But we will certainly need some help from the city to allow Town Run Lane to be reduced in travel width, which, which we are able to do, but it would require some help there to increase the width of the sidewalk.
Thank you. And Mr. King, do you see any desire within the city staff to address that?
I, I think there, we, we agree with, with Adam, we, we're there. So frankly, the issue is money. It's finding the money to, to kind of make this work. So I don't think, I don't think there's opposition to, to doing that. It's just finding a pot of money to, to make that happen.
And it isn't appropriate to ask the developer for, to share?
No, not, not in this case, because again, what is before you is really a very defined request. It's only dealing with the transparency along that. So everything else is, is okay, and that's really the only thing that's at the scope of the planning board review is that transparency along that Town Run frontage.
Yeah. Well, you know, we've, we've made this mistake in town before of, of saying, well, this side's pretty, this side isn't, and then shooting ourselves in the foot as we do that, particularly when we've got a commitment to strollways, greenways, and we've got the potential of connectivity, not only to Marshall Park, but straight on through Mar- Marshall Park, up Trade Street, right on into some greenways north of there. So I, I guess I will reservedly do this, but I certainly hope that the city will put some, some thought into softening that Town Run and making it pedestrian-friendly, because this isn't helping. Thank you.
I mean, I asked a question of when, if ever, we may have the opportunity to get a second bite at this apple, if you will, in support exactly of what George and Adam were talking about.
So, so, so if I'm understanding the question correctly, Jack, I believe the question is, you know, this sort of redesign and rethinking of what happens in the public right-of-way along Town Run Lane. That, that, that decision is likely not to come back to the planning board. That, that is really more of a city, just solely kind of public works decision. So we can certainly pass along, and certainly these comments will be in the minutes. And I know we have some council members joining us, so they're, they're, they're hearing this discussion. But what I would say is that decision is likely not coming back to the planning board for an action item on your part.
I understand, all right. That's, that's very helpful clarification, and I understand that the purpose of this. And I understand that the purpose of this agenda item is to deal specifically with the architectural issue of the structure itself. I just, I will also encourage everyone that, like George, is a good believer in urban design and the strollways and the greenways and their connectivity, for us to go forward encouraging some additional consideration be given to the town run lane area. It's also vital. It's a whole different topic, but it's equally important.
Thank you, Mrs. Stillman and Mr. Bryant. So we do have a previous motion and second already on the floor. Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs is recused on this one, as previously discussed. Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Lee?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
Okay, that's seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, there are no more items on the consent agenda.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, that'll take us back to the beginning of the agenda for the first order of public hearing, that is zoning case W three, four, four, seven. That is Arbor Acres case. I know we have many speakers here for this case, and I know Gary Roberts is, it's like we're getting the presentation teed up right there. So without further objection, we'll go ahead and begin the staff presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you may remember that this case was continued from your July meeting. It is W three, four, four, seven. Petitioner is Arbor Acres United Methodist Retirement Community Incorporated. The site is 25 and a half acres located on the south, south of Arbor Road across from Arbor Place Court. And it is a special use rezoning request from RM eight S to CS, that's Campus District, Special Use, continuing the two uses that are currently approved, Life Care Community and Nursing Care Institution. The reason that this request is being submitted as a rezoning is that the RM eight district has a maximum height limit of 45 feet, and the petitioners would like to add three buildings that vary between 55 and 75 feet. And that is why they're asking for the C district, which has a higher height limit. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located within the urban neighborhoods there, Growth Management Area Two. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow. Again, this is about a 25 and a half acre portion of the larger, approximately 83 acres that is part of the Arbor Arbor Acres Retirement Community, again, on the south side of Arbor Road. All of that property is currently zoned RM eight S. The surrounding zoning and development pattern to the south is the Cross North School and Children's Home Zone C, Campus District also. And then you have various different residential districts that basically surround the remaining of the site, single family residential to the west and to the north, and then over to the east along Roosevelt and Taft Street. This is an aerial image showing the subject property, highlighted there in yellow. Want to look at this just briefly. Where you see the blue pond that's existing on the site and the word Susanna Wesley underneath that, right below that, that's probably the lowest portion of this whole entire development. And so the buildings are close to there. That's that's one of the reasons why our staff is, as I'll mention later, supportive of this, because it is a lower portion of this site. The highest portion of the site is going to the west. You see, it's a lot less, more sparsely developed. That's a much more visible area, and therefore, we think it would be probably not a compatible request with those tall buildings shown on this portion of the site. But in the central portion, the lowest portion, it is less impactful from a visual standpoint. A couple of images taken on site. This is Arbor Road, looking southeast. This is, there's two entrances that serve Arbor Acres right now. This is the westernmost entrance. We have received a lot of concern about traffic with this request. I just want to mention on this right briefly, Arbor Road is a connection right now that runs basically parallel with Coliseum. It's south of Coliseum. It provides an important connection between essentially Renolda Road and University Parkway. It transitions. And it also continues further west all the way to Liberty Street, going through the Greenway Neighborhood. It's classified as a collector street. Right now, it has a capacity of about 11,000 cars per day operating, that's operating at a level Service D. Right now, it has about 2,800 cars, and the proposed request would generate a little bit less than 200 trips per day. So just kind of a comparison there. One more image taken internal to the site. One of the new buildings would take place to the left of this existing pond that I showed you earlier in blue. So this is a northwest Winston-Salem area plan adopted in 2017. The blue of the subject property would be for institutional use. Purple would be for mixed use. Single family residential, low density residential would be shown there in yellow. So this is a site plan of the proposed development. You can see again in blue that the pond that's existing, tree save area over in the lower right, where it is shown in green, stormwater management there in brown, on the lower center portion. That's a relocated stormwater management facility. We've also received some concerns about stormwater. Joe Fogarty is available, should there be any questions in regard to stormwater management. The three new buildings are shown there in orange. These are independent living units. It's about 69 units right now. That brings a total in this area to 210 units. That's still under eight units per acre for the for the development. So again, this is one of the lowest portions of the site. There is some visibility from some of the neighbors, neighboring properties. We asked them, in addition, to provide those six trees at the baseline, southern baseline of the site, to kind of provide some additional screening there. And these are the images, one of the images of the proposed buildings, and these are, again, are ranging from 55 to 75 feet in height. As I mentioned, we have had some concern about traffic. So just to summarize that, Arbor Road is currently carries less than 200, excuse me, 2,800 vehicles per day. It can accommodate 11,000. The current zoning with 141 units would generate about 353 trips per day from this section of Arbor Acres. And the proposed zoning, adding 69 units would, could go up to 210 units, generating 525 trips per day. So that's a little less than 200 trips per day that are being added to the street, which has ample capacity. Additional side traffic therefore would not have a negative impact to the existing road network. Let me just summarize back to the area plan. Both Legacy and the area plan recommend institutional uses, but for their expansion, they need to take place in a manner that's compatible and sensitive to the context of the area. Current zoning allows a building height of 45 feet. Proposed zoning would permit three buildings which exceed this, 55 to 75 feet. Legacy and the Northwest Winston-Salem Area Plan, as I just mentioned, recommend that when appropriate neighborhood institutions should expand in a manner that's compatible with the surrounding area. And the location of this, both being in the lower portion of the site, the additional screening there, staff is comfortable from that aspect. And proposed buildings are shown in one of the lowest portions of the site, again, as I mentioned. So staff does recommend approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. And Jeff Fensler with City Department of Transportation is also available for questions on this site. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are there any questions from staff, I mean, from the Planning Board, for staff first? Okay, then we are going to go into a public hearing, because I heard we do have opponents. So as a reminder, for our public hearing today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once you have been recognized by the staff or member, please, for the record, state your name, your address, and your zip code. Mr. Murphy, I'm presuming you're keeping the time?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm multitasking. I am keeping it.
All right, thank you, sir. So, Mr. King, I'm going to turn this over to you then.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as indicated, we have a lot of speakers here this afternoon, really on each side for this case. So as we do typically, we will begin with the proponents, and we have several folks signed up as proponents. We have Jay Clapp, Steve Causey, Les Cranfield, Stuart Beeson, and Andrew Applegate. So gentlemen, I don't know if you thought, who wants to speak first, but whoever that is, please unmute yourself, give your name and address for the record, and begin your remarks.
Steve Causey, L I Design. I am here with 4720 Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, 2703. I am here on behalf of the petitioner. Also with me are representatives of the owner, Les Cranfield, Director of Construction Services, and Andrew Applegate, President and CEO. Start a video. I think I'll be the primary speaker today. They're here really for questions as needed. Jay Clapp with Rami Kemp and Associates is here in attendance as well. And Stuart Beeson, our project manager with Construction Practices, is also here. So I think I'll be the primary speaker. We may refer to him for questions. As usual, Gary did a good job with the staff report. I just want to share briefly with you kind of our thoughts behind the request, kind of what prompted it, and maybe some of our outreach efforts. We've been working with Arbor Acres to redevelop this kind of core central district of the campus. Focusing and concentrating redevelopment in this area allows us to maintain about a 500-foot buffer around the perimeter. We can maintain the existing development patterns in that area. Again, effectively maintaining that buffer, but focusing the development allows us a couple of things. It maintains primarily convenient access for a lot of the residents. They're able to access the facilities internal to the campus. It also allows us to minimize additional impervious coverage around the site as well. So when we started the planning effort, we did reach out to the planning staff to try to find an appropriate zoning district that might perhaps accommodate the taller buildings. Based on the area plan and legacy recommendations, we felt like the campus district was appropriate. As Gary mentioned, visibility from, you know, from the surrounding properties was a concern. We were able to cite the buildings at the low point of the property, as he mentioned. We provided some perspectives, I think, that are available in your package. It kind of gives you perspective views from Renolda Road, and I think from properties to the east. We did have a neighborhood meeting on June 25th at Pilgrim Court. You have a summary, but essentially, no one attended that meeting. Shortly after that meeting, Arbor Acres did receive some communication from the neighbors in the Kent Road area. I think it's Reynolds Park neighborhood. Primarily, a lot of concern we heard was regarding traffic. We did, at that time, engage Rami Kemp to assist us with the traffic study, perform a traffic analysis. Then we set up a subsequent Zoom meeting with the neighborhoods from Reynolds Park area. On July 21st, we held that meeting, and the neighbors, I'm sure, will speak for themselves tonight, but primarily elaborated their concerns about the potential for increased traffic on Kent and Arbor Road. They did advise us, advise us of some previous efforts for traffic calming strategies in their efforts with the city. Arbor Acres, we did, we did advise them that we would begin to instruct suppliers and vendors at that time to not use the Kent Road and Arbor areas, Arbor Arbor Road for access, and to really focus access to the site from Pilgrim. We also agreed to try to facilitate a meeting with the city, which we did, in fact, on August the 6th, with a smaller group from the neighborhood. We met with Jeff Fensler. We shared the results of our traffic study. Gary's confirmed volumes, our counts were the same. We don't think there's a volume issue, but there is, in fact, a speed issue. It supported the concerns of the neighbor. And again, the conversations with Jeff Fensler really were an effort to try to support traffic calming, any measures that could be implemented. So that's all we wanted to say at this time. I think I'm the only one that needs to speak, but we're certainly here to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to unmute.
Yes, Mr. Causey, what are your plans with the stormwater, particularly around issues of quantity?
I'm sorry, particularly around where?
Issues of quantity.
So quantity will be addressed in accordance with the city's ordinance. As you're probably aware, we have to manage the 210 and 25-year storms, 25-year volume, one-year 24-hour rates. This particular basin does drain down into the Peters Creek drainage, as I'm sure you're aware. But again, we expect full compliance with the stormwater ordinance.
Any thought of going beyond the 25-year?
We understand that's a routine request. We can certainly appreciate the request, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Causey? Or anyone else would like to speak as a proponent?
Mr. Chairman, we, yes, we still have Mr. Clapp, Mr. Cranfield, Mr. Beeson, and Mr. Applegate signed up. And Chris, how much time do we have left for the remaining speakers in support?
Eight and a half minutes.
Okay. So whoever would like to go next, please feel free to unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record, and begin your remarks.
Aaron, I'll be the only one speaking. I think they're all here basically to answer questions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, without further objection, we would then turn to the opposition, who would have a total of 12 minutes to state their comments to the board. I know we have a lot of speakers that are signed up in opposition. It's my understanding that John Wigodsky, I hope I didn't mispronounce your name too poorly there, I believe is the first speaker, and I may be speaking on behalf of additional folks. So if that's correct, please go ahead and unmute yourself and provide your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
Thank you for that. My name is John Wigodsky, and I have lived at 1140 East Kent Road at the corner of Arbor Road for the past 20 years. I am speaking today to oppose the rezoning request by Arbor Acres for reasons that I will explain in a minute. My neighborhood is Renolda Park, is adjacent to the western side of Arbor Acres. The neighborhood is bounded by Arbor Road, East Kent Road, and Renolda Road. It is a historic neighborhood that was created in the 1930s, when Catherine Reynolds subdivided 65 acres at the southern end of Renolda State. She wanted to have an area park-like and field and laid out lots and roads accordingly. The Planning Board's Northwest Area Plan cites our neighborhood as a historic district and cites a number of houses in the neighborhood being recognized by the state's Historic Preservation Office. Today, East Kent and Arbor Roads are plagued by a high traffic volume, traveling at a high rate of speed, as was mentioned earlier. Residents of the neighborhood often have trouble entering and exiting their property, and not only feel unsafe, but are unsafe walking on our neighborhood streets. Traffic studies done in the neighborhood show approximately 2,000 cars per day traveling on neighborhood streets, which were never designed to accommodate that volume of traffic. The speed limit in the neighborhood is 25 miles per hour. Speed checks show that the average speed of traffic is seven to eight miles per hour over the speed limit, and some cars are clocking over twice the speed limit, from 50 miles an hour. Enforcement by the police is sporadic. Enforcement by the police is sporadic at best, but when it is done, officers cannot ride tickets fast enough. Just last week, the neighborhood petitioned the city to develop a traffic calming proposal, including speed bumps to address the speed issue, and we are awaiting a response by Mr. Fensler. The traffic volume problem is being caused by two factors. First, the neighborhood roads have become a cut route for people traveling to Coliseum, Drive, and Renolda Road, or University Parkway. The second source of traffic is people to and from Arbor Acres. This takes many forms, its residents, its vendors, its visitors, and its staff. As Arbor Acres has grown, so has the traffic. This was recently highlighted when Arbor Acres was on COVID lockdown, and traffic volume in the neighborhood dropped significantly. Arbor Acres' growth has been continuous for the past 10 years, going from 409 residents and 251 employees in 2010 to 500 residents and 339 employees in 2020, a growth rate of 27%. This brings me to the reason for opposing the rezoning request. Without an alternative traffic plan, the expansion at Arbor Acres will further add to our neighborhood traffic issues. It will not just be the 100 new residents traveling on our streets, it will be additional visitors, vendors, and staff. We strongly disagree with the planning staff assessment that the additional traffic will not be an issue on Arbor or East Kent Roads. Traffic is already an issue, and the expansion will make it worse. While Arbor Acre, or excuse me, while Arbor Road was widened in front of Arbor Acres during its last expansion, the road quickly narrows as it approaches East Kent Road. There is no way these roads can accommodate the 11,000 vehicles, a quadruple the current volume cited as its capacity. The projected incremental trips with expansion do not recognize incremental visitors, staff, and vendors. Thus, the impact of the expansion to the road infrastructure in the planning staff report is inaccurate and in need of further study. In addition, it is not possible to look at each expansion of Arbor Acres in isolation and to say it will not have an impact. The totality of Arbor Acres' expansion over time must be reviewed, and the impact on our historic neighborhood evaluation. Residents of the neighborhood have met with representatives of Arbor Acres, as been previously stated, to discuss our traffic issues. Arbor Acres has said that they would endorse the installation of speed bumps in the neighborhood. They have instructed vendors to use Pilgrim Court versus Arbor Road when entering or exiting Arbor Acres. We believe that a more comprehensive plan is necessary to channel all traffic from Arbor Acres onto Pilgrim Court, where there is easy access to Coliseum Drive and all points east and west. Working with the city, we believe that a viable solution to channeling traffic onto Pilgrim Court can be developed, and any rezoning approval should be contingent on the traffic plan being completed. Long term, we would like to see Arbor Acres explore alternative entrances that would not involve Arbor Road, since we feel sure that there will be expansion plans beyond the one currently under consideration. Today, we asked approval for another rezoning request, being delayed pending further study by the planning staff, of the full impact of Arbor Acres' expansion on our historic Renolda Park. And presentation by Arbor Acres, in conjunction with the city, of a plan of how to channel traffic to Pilgrim Court versus Arbor Road. I would now like to turn it over to my neighbor, Kia Hosin-Zaidah, who has remarks as well.
Six minutes.
Thank you, John. My name is Kia Hosin-Zaidah, and I live at 1050 East Kent Road, 27104. My family moved here from Pittsburgh in 2013, and we'd actually lived in a historic district in the city of Pittsburgh. We were attracted to Renolda Park for similar reasons. It's considered a historic district, as John has mentioned, with national landmarks, green spaces, and parks, and has good neighborhood schools. We were reassured that Winston-Salem urban planning policies for future growth would preserve the quality of life for the residents and also maintain the scenic beauty of this neighborhood. I have two young girls, and currently it's impossible to walk safely or bicycle in this historic district, especially on East Kent Road, when cars are speeding in excess of 40 miles an hour in a 25 mile per hour zone, in addition to the high traffic volume. One of my girls was almost struck by a truck speeding along East Kent Road, and just two weeks ago, I had to jump into a bush while walking on West Kent Road when a service vehicle veered off the road traveling at high speed. We can't even bicycle to Renolda Road, which has existing bicycle paths, and it's only a stone's throw from our home. The environmental impact from the garbage is tremendously concerning, and it's dangerous to clear the garbage. It's a risk for serious, this has two-pronged. We know from, we know from traffic data that while speed and traffic volumes coexist, they're not independent factors. In this pandemic, traffic data has been reevaluated, and while volume has expectedly dropped during this pandemic, speeds were still in the 85th percentile, and Jeff can certainly comment on this, exceeding 40 miles per hour. Now, speed bumps are a necessary solution to decrease the average speed, and it may decrease the overall traffic volume, although I have no evidence at this time to support that traffic volume will decrease with speed bumps alone. Traffic volume still needs to be addressed by both the city and Arbor Acres. The high traffic volume has been partly brought into our neighborhood by Arbor Acres and has negatively impacted our historic district. I would like to think that Arbor Acres is proactive in mitigating both current volumes, which are high, and further increases when they have future expansions. And with all due respect to the, to the board, I would like to think that any urban planning would bring together institutions, commercial developers, and the residents, and I don't believe that's occurred in this historic neighborhood. Thank you very much, and I'm going to give my time now to Patricia.
Three minutes left.
Hi, my name is Patricia Brown. I live at 1110 Arbor Road and 27104. I've been a resident of Winston-Salem for 32 years, and we moved here specifically for this historic neighborhood and its access to Renolda, the Renolda property and Renolda Garden. We have learned over time that this traffic problem has changed the neighborhood in such a way that the diversity in age of this neighborhood has changed. With the exception of Kai's boy, daughters, we have very few children. And there's, it's very clear why there are very few children. They, their parents are afraid to let them out beyond the driveway. That in, in and of itself drives the properties, property values down and, and diminishes the whole neighborhood's value. It's, it's dangerous, as you've heard, to walk next to the street. We end up having to jump on the side constantly. And the, the other thing I wanted to say beyond the traffic is that at our July Zoom meeting with Arbor Acres, when I asked how tall new buildings would be, the, the answer was, oh, we're not sure, actually. Let's see, I think about 50 feet. Well, this is the first time I have heard on this, at this very meeting, that there will be buildings in the future up to 75 feet. And I cannot, I cannot, in good conscience, allow that kind of future development, beginning with this particular classification, to happen in a very specialized part of town that has retained its character because of, of few, very future-oriented thinking. So that's what I have to say.
There's 30 seconds left.
Okay, this is J D Wilson. This, the point is, there's not enough time with 12 minutes to make our case. Is it possible for Arbor Acres to let us have some of their unused time?
It doesn't work like that, I don't believe.
Mr. Chairman, that would ultimately be a call by the board.
I, I would say, I would say no, unless there's something, unless the board disagrees or there's something different that's going to be said. I don't know if additional time would be...
Mr. Chairman, now, this is, this is Clarence. We do have a historical precedent of, you know, we really do have a bunch of opponents, and maybe adding another two minutes or four minutes or something like that, I'm not even recommending it. I'm just letting you know, we have done that on some cases in the past.
Okay.
I would, I would say, this is John Wigodsky, that J D is our last speaker. So if he could have a couple of more minutes, then we will conclude our, our case.
Okay, without having to call the role, does any board member have an objection to add in another two to three minutes for the opponents?
I would encourage it.
All right, thank you. All right, so we will let, I think you said, J D have some remarks.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Arbor Acres. My name is J D Wilson. My wife, Janie, and I live at 1069 East Kent Road, 27104, between two houses that are on the National Register, and with Arbor Acres literally as our backyard neighbor. And we're proud to have Arbor Acres as our neighbor. Our property is the southern perimeter of the original Renolda Estate. My neighbors, John Key and Patty, have covered the multiple reasons we are here today: excessive traffic, high speeds, unsafe traffic, and attraction to the character of a unique historical neighborhood, described as one of the city's historic treasures. First, all of us, that's you, the staff, the city, the county, Arbor Acres, and our neighborhood, we all need to slow down and have more time to learn about these rezoning plans, the impact now, and for 2035 and beyond, and consider potential solutions together. We need time to find ways for meaningful collaboration, which is in our city's DNA. The staff may have followed the letter of the law in this process, and if so, the process is flawed, as our neighborhood was caught totally off-guard by this major expansion for two reasons. One, the required signs were posted at Arbor Acres, not in our neighborhood. And second, the letter was delivered during COVID late and when people were away for the July 4th holiday. The staff report is loaded with metrics, traffic counts, traffic speech, generic road standards, but minimal details about the historic neighborhood we're blessed to live in, or protection of its environment, especially mature trees and vegetation, or its character of place. Two days ago, an elected official sent me a copy of the Northwest Winston-Salem Area Plan, and I've been digesting it ever since. What a well-done document. So thank you for that effort back in 2012. It's loaded with narrative about protection of historic treasures, preserving the character and quality of such neighborhoods, and related environmental concerns. There must be 100 such references in it, but the staff report did not really touch on them, perhaps because metrics are easier to cite, advocate, or defend. This is a significant failing of this process and/or the report. In its references to the area plan, the report simply indicates that the petition conforms. We respectfully disagree. And regarding economic development on page 51, it states the legacy goal is to attract environmentally sensitive new businesses and provide a high quality of life. We need to be mindful of what message the action on this matter sends to that world. Closing, safety, and the speed of drivers is a serious concern. The existing excessive traffic, not to mention additional traffic for this expansion, is a serious concern. Protection of our historic neighborhood with rolling and curving topography is a serious concern. We would not allow this level of traffic and speed through historical Salem. In fact, we rerouted Main Street to avoid that. We should have the same concern for Winston's historic Renolda Park. As John mentioned, Mrs. Reynolds created Renolda Park, and with the talent of noted landscape architect Thomas Sears, it's one of the city's top historic treasures. If she were here today, her voice would be heard asking you to protect the historic treasure to which she gave birth. As residents of her visionary residential park, we are honored to be here today, hopefully to speak on her behalf as a way that you will hear. We ask that you delay consideration to give all of us time to work together through this for a compatible, updated traffic management plan that works for us and the Winston-Salem we all love. Again, I thank you for your time and consideration of our request.
Thank you very much. So with that, I am now going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of some of the presenters?
Yes.
Either Mr. Wilson or Mr. Wigodsky, was the traffic study done during COVID times, or was it done outside of the COVID period?
The, the traffic study that was referenced was done during the COVID times. It was done in July. There was a prior study that was done, I believe, four years ago, where the traffic numbers were significantly higher than they were. The, the drop in traffic is roughly 30% during the COVID period.
Okay, so the 2,800 number came at a time when it was not COVID?
Our numbers, I believe that was done when it was not COVID. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And in 2016, I think.
Yes. And, and just by, by way of example, on East Kent Road, for instance, southbound, the, the traffic count was 1,419 cars in 90, or 2016, and it was 1,121 cars in the most recent study. So that, that gives you an order of magnitude of, of the difference between the two studies. And I think one of our concerns, as I stated, is that Arbor Road narrows considerably. When Arbor Acres did their last expansion, they were required to expand Arbor Road. And if you come Arbor Road out of Arbor Acres going westbound, it quickly narrows as soon as you pass the Arbor Acres property, makes a curve into a brick wall, which is repeatedly hit by high-speed traffic before approaching East Kent Road. And so, again, one of the reasons we're challenging the traffic volume is the narrowness of the roads. These roads were designed in a park-like setting. They were not designed as major thoroughfares.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So to the planning board, anyone want to make a motion for the discussion? Any thoughts, any opinions? Yes, Ms. Dunnigan, and then Ms. Smith.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I see this as a very sensitively designed proposal, and I just wanted to compliment the petitioner on that, especially because of the consolidation of the proposal in the center of the development, leaving the buffer of the RM8 property. And I think that, and, and also the effort to take the view sheds into consideration altogether makes this an attractive proposal, in my, in my view. I do understand the issue with the traffic and, and the neighbors concerned about the traffic. I'm very sensitive to that issue. But what I see here is kind of a disconnect between the neighbors' desire to keep a neighborhood street volume for Arbor Road, and also the fact that in the network of streets that we have, it functions as a collector's street. And because of that, you're always going to have through traffic. And I don't see this development, you know, as, as Mr. Roberts pointed out, significantly raising the volume, especially since it's going to be dispersed throughout the whole network. But the, one of the petitioners made, I mean, the speakers, I think it, Mr. Mr. Wigodsky mentioned redesigning the road system, and I see that as really probably the best solution that you might want to consider. I don't know how practical it is, but that would be the solution. but that would be the solution here because the way the roads seem to be designed is for that through traffic through Arbor. And so I don't really see this proposal as being a significant contributor to the problem, which you do have. So for that reason, I'm, you know, okay with the proposal. I think it's a well-designed one.
Thank you, Ms. Donegan. Ms. Smith?
I'd like to thank her as well. She said 95% of what I was going to say, probably much better spoken then. The one comment I was thinking about, the referral to a traffic management plan, which would really be something that's beyond the scope of what our decisions are. But if, it sounds like people like Arbor Acres and the community have some of the same concerns and really have the potential to work together to try and, you know, apply some traffic calming measures, work with DOT, something like that could help improve this area. And maybe these discussions will help further that along.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
If I can make a comment.
Mr. Bryan?
Things have changed a lot in that area since that was the Orchard of the Children's Home. And I know that also building in Kent Road, along Kent Road, has increased dramatically since my time in Winston-Salem, which has put extra stress on that road along the way, too. I know that this whole discussion about speed on Kent Road and, and the access through Kent Road, changing a segment of it to one way was one attempt at the solution at the point. But I, I truly think that city officials are going to have to sit down with residents in the neighborhood and come up with a good plan. And I, I hope it doesn't include widening the rest of Arbor Road and things like that. I, I think there are bound to be solutions other, along that way. As I referenced before in a previous case, I don't see that we on the planning board have a whole lot of influence on DOT. And I apologize to that, to the community as a planning board member. I think it ought to be structured differently so that, so that what's happening with DOT and what's happening with planning goes hand in hand because they do, in reality, go in, in hand and do effect. But we just don't have control over DOT decisions along the way, despite how hazard that makes planning. And so I apologize to the community for that. Thank you.
That was well-stated. Thank you so much, Mr. Bryan. Anyone else from the planning board would like to speak?
I will, I will just say, as a native of Winston-Salem, there are a number of things that make me incredibly proud to be from here. One of those is Reynolda Park. There is no reason that I should continually be allowed to leave my office on Country Club Road and cut through that neighborhood to get to Putters for a cheesesteak for lunch. We can do a better job both of traffic calming and of traffic management as long as we're all together and share the, and share the common goals, which I sense that, that there is support for the continued development of Arbor Acres. I can, I feel like there is support for people sitting together at the same table to work out the adjacent traffic issues. And I would love to see that happen. I think we've got the capacity to solve this.
Thank you, Mr. Stillman. So it sounds as if, you know, the, most of the planning board has spoken. Mr. Bran, I think, said it very well. There are some things that we as a planning board have control over, and unfortunately, regrettably, DOT is not. And that's not being insensitive of the traffic problem. We all know there, there are challenges. So would anyone like to make a motion? What is your, your pleasure on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is Clarence.
That is motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second?
Second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan?
Yes.
Willinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobes?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
That's eight to zero.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend approval of W. 3447.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
A second.
A second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Willinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobes?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
No.
That is seven to one.
Thank you, Mr. King. I do hope that it is in the minutes, the concerns of the neighborhood with traffic that, you know, some, some way that things are able to be looked at and worked out.
It, it will be, Mr. Chairman, and those will certainly be in the minutes that will go up to City Council as this gets considered at their level.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that will now bring us to the next item on your agenda, which is item B2, and that is zoning case W. 3449. I know we have speakers from both sides here for this case. So without further objection, we'll go ahead and begin the staff presentation. I think Amy's getting it pulled up, and I believe Gary is ready to go on this one.
Thank you, Aaron. This is Zoning Dock at W. 3449. The petitioner is White Oak Vista LLC, and the site is 1.19, 1.91 acres, located on the north side of Country Club Road across from Tucker Avenue. And this is a special use rezoning from limited business, special use limited, to general business, special use for multiple uses. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located within the yellow suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3, and it fronts along Country Club Road, which is a growth corridor. This is a zoning map showing the subject property in yellow. Currently, there's some modest-sized buildings located on the site. It is zoned LBL. It is the easternmost portion of the Gordon Manor Activity Center. So you have some other LB and HBS zonings directly to the east and, excuse me, to the west and across Country Club Road. Then some multifamily zoning further across Country Club Road. And the remaining adjacent zoning is RS9, single-family residential, where to the right, to the east, is Trinity, Trinity United Methodist Church and the Gordon Manor neighborhood along Cavalier Drive to the north, zoned RS9. This is an aerial image showing the subject property. Most of it is currently not developed, as you can see there. Couple of images on site. This is looking into the subject property from Tucker Avenue, looking across Country Club Road. Another image there, looking into the subject property. Looking west from the subject property, onto Country Club Road. Country Club Road is a, I believe it's a minor thoroughfare, and it is served with transit currently now. Also from the subject property, this is looking east there at Trinity United Methodist Church. It's located with a West Suburban Area Plan update adopted in 2018. So it is, again, within the Gordon Manor Activity Center, which recommends commercial land use for the subject property. So the request is consistent with the area plan in regard to the land use recommendation. Yellow would be low-density, single-family residential surrounding the back of the, of the site. This is the site plan showing the subject property. While there's a host of other uses being requested, the site is designed for storage services, retail use. It's a two-story building, 87,200 square feet. The driveway and parking would be to the right on the eastern portion of the site. Because of the low trip generation and low parking requirements for this specific use, you can see in comparison how really relatively small the parking area is in regard to the size of the building. To the north of the site, you have in light tan, that's the proposed stormwater management facility. Petitioners have agreed to enhance stormwater management condition, which I will show you on one of the following images. And when the previous property was, was, when the property was rezoned to LBL a few years ago, there was a condition that they have an enhanced buffer yard back there, keeping some of the existing vegetation shown in green, and they're carrying forward that condition. So from a residential standpoint, to the north, staff thought it was a well-designed site plan because none of this parking or circulation or dumpster was positioned in that area, really just a lot of lower activity shown in that area. The building's pulled up to the street, which is certainly what we want to see in a pedestrian-oriented fashion in an activity center. This particular use is not something that we typically see or advocate or the zoning GB district in a neighborhood-scale activity center. And it is a fairly large building. But again, with the, the building placement and the condition forward about that landscaping in the back and consistency with the area plan, staff felt like those were some mitigating factors. So, next image, please. These are the building elevations, and we do commend the petitioner for working with staff on enhancing these, resubmitting some revised elevations, which we feel like would, would contribute to the streetscape along Country Club Road. It is a large building, but it does address the street, minimal parking to the side and rear. And, and we feel like that it would add value to the streetscape of, of Country Club Road. This is the enhanced stormwater condition. I will not read that. Believe we may be still, we certainly have the petitioner available to detail that, should there be any questions. And Joe Fogarty may still be present to answer any questions. So the majority of the site has been commercially zoned since 1994. Area plan recommends commercial uses at this site. The use shown, as I mentioned, is not one that we would typically, excuse me, the use shown on the proposed site plan is not expected to generate many vehicle trips, about 218 trips per day, so really a very low trip generating use that the site is designed for. And the parking and vehicle or circulation is not proposed along the northern portion of the site, which abuts single-family homes. So staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Roberts? All right, seeing that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Again, remember that each side has 12 minutes, and there will be no rebuttal period.
I'm sorry, Chair.
You have a question?
I saw in one of the letters, and I don't, I don't know whether it'll be brought up again. Was there an issue with hazardous materials in this site?
I could not answer that. I would need to defer to the petitioner. And if I would, just, I'd like to correct the statement. I stated that Country Club Road was a minor thoroughfare. It's a major, but I could not answer that question, George.
Thank you very much.
All right, and so, Mr. King, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have multiple speakers signed up as proponents and multiple as opponents. So as, as we've done in previous cases, we're going to begin with the proponents. You'll have a total of 12 minutes. And we have four folks signed up, John Reese, Luke Dickey, James Bennett, and Jonathan Dormand. So guys, whoever is going to speak first, please go ahead and unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record, and begin your remarks.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board and members of the Board. My name is Luke Dickey with Stimel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. I'll be the primary speaker in regards to this evening's case. And as mentioned by Aaron, we do have John Reese, Jonathan Dormand, and Jamie Bennett as part of the development group here to answer any questions and also to supplement anything that I have stated. Thank you for your time this evening. And Amy, if you can go to next slide, please. So Gary did a great job with the presentation, really kind of covering everything that we are being proposed at this time. This was zoned LBL back in 2015 by the property owner. That was White Oaks. And for, they had some plans for development on that site, and they went through, of course, the review process. We're here before you today because the developers would like to do a storage service facility. And that, of course, then is not allowed within the LB zoning district. And then we need to request that use to come forward, and GB was the best use that that could fit in. And so that's why we're bringing the GVS zoning petition to you today. Gary, as he had covered the site plan, it is a two-story building with a basement. So just kind of explain that to you, push to the, to the front. So from Country Club Road, there'll be a two-story elevation, and then the rest of the building will be in a basement level. As the site drops off towards the rear, which is the north side, we have a brake line there, you can see that's kind of dashed in where the building will then step down. That's the point where the basement then gets daylighted at the back. So the facade that faces to the residence to the north will be two stories at that point. So again, we're trying to maintain that two-story. So while it is a large building, most of that is a basement level, and we try to step the building so it always keeps that two-story facade look from the front and from the rear. With the building pulled up to the front, it's that pedestrian orientation. And of course, as Gary had mentioned, we'd work with staff on how that facade looks. And you'll see that elevation perspective again here a little bit later on in the presentation. Parking is pulled to the side and to the rear, excuse me, to the side of the building, not to the rear. So it is pulled away from the residential neighborhood, as well as any of the loading there. It's just to the midpoint of the side of the building. And so we have the type 3 buffer yard adjacent to the Trinity United Methodist Church wrapped there on the east side. Also wraps around where they have their meditation garden, which is kind of that little chunk that's in the corner of the site. And then again, again, we agreed to continue that 40-foot undisturbed type 3 buffer as what was originally approved in the zoning in 2015, with some substantial-sized trees that are located in that area. We've agreed to a condition, as stated, in terms of stormwater management. For the previous case with Arbor Acres, you heard Mr. Cozy mention designing to the minimum of a one, two, 25 years, 10-year storms. We're agreeing to go to the 50-year storm for a design standpoint. We are looking at a, probably a open sand filter on the backside with some detention. And so that is not an open water device that'll help with the mosquitoes. So there's no overwater back there. And we're also working with Joe Fogarty with Stormwater Division about how much water we can take out towards Country Club to reduce the amount of discharge that goes into those back neighbors. So we're looking at most likely that at that point, a system would be located in the parking lot, and it would tie into the existing stormwater system in Country Club Road. Again, Gary had mentioned that this is a low-traffic generator for a type of use. So when it was zoned LBL, there was some conceptual plans that were kind of presented with that to the neighbors. That was talked about maybe up to 30,000 square feet of kind of a mixed use, whether it be an office or potential for a sit-down restaurant and retail. So any of those uses obviously will drive the amount of traffic generation on the site much higher. Any type of use there, too, would also require a lot more parking for those type of uses. As you can see on our site plan here, we have 12 total spaces. So that gives you an idea about how much traffic will be generated by this. In the staff report, it was mentioned, from just doing the ITE calculations for traffic, that there was 218 kind of trips generated per day based on the size of this facility. There's a lot of, the petitioners of this for four-store, they develop a lot of these, and then their operational experience that, you know, it'll be higher trip generation when you first start and get it operated because you're getting people coming in to lease and, and for the facility. But once it's fully operational and permanently kind of rid it out, then that, that trip generation drops dramatically. And typically, they see about 30 trips per day coming in and out. So it is a very low, low-traffic generator. Next slide, please. This is the site section, basically looking from the west of the building. So as this is the Cavalier Drive residence directly behind. So this kind of gives you an idea about where that building step takes place and, and then the continual slope all the back, along with that 40-foot buffer. So maintain those existing trees, and we're proposing to come back in, supplement the additional evergreen plantings underneath that tree canopy in the areas that needs to be to meet those requirements for the buffer. And again, that sand, the filter system would be in between the buffer and the back end of the building there, so that won't be seen by the neighbors. Next slide, please. This is the perspective rendering, and this is the view if you're traveling west on Country Club Road. So that is the southeast corner. That's where the main office will be. That's where the main office will be. The loading is a little bit further located off to the right-hand side, back behind the articulated facade there in the parking lot. And so the idea, of course, was to create a nice solid brick base, give a foundation to the building, do some kind of more clear story looking windows. Again, all of the units are internal to the building. So it's going to be access controlled and it's high security so that you have to have each individual tenant of that will have a code that they enter in to come into the facility in hours. And Mr. Jamie Bennett can answer any questions from an operations standpoint about how they look at running this facility. Next slide, please. Again, this is in the Western suburban area plan, as updated in 2018, highlight the property there. The blue to the east is United Methodist Church for Trinity. And then of course, that's demarcated as a commercial use. So new developments in these areas should include commercial uses located, of course, on Country Club Road, having a pedestrian oriented urban form with buildings near the street, featuring transparent windows, doors, facades, articulation and parking to the side or rear of the buildings. Installation of buffer yards, street yards and parking area plantings should occur where feasible and screening of commercial uses of budding residential developments is recommended. And our site plan is meeting all of those requirements. Next slide, please. We did have some neighbor outreach. Now COVID is a very interesting time to try to hold neighborhood meetings and find places. So we have opted at this point to send out letters to those that within 500 feet and at times beyond. So what is represented in the red here are all the property owners that we had sent letters to. How we generate those letters is based on the, what's available on GeoData. So it allows you to do a selection and it generates mailing labels for you. With those mailing labels, it usually only pulls the first listed property owner on that. So you may have in your packet a concern about a residence that was not listed on that mailing and that's the reason why we did not go back in and back check for all second listed property owners because we had 217 total mailings that we went out. So I'm glad to hear that actually did arrive at the, at the residence. We did receive one response from an owner in, in request of that, and she had already talked to Mr. John Reese prior. She is a neighbor that is directly behind the facility. And Mr. Walters, I saw you had joined on today. I apologize that you did not get a response from me. The voicemail had gone to my office and they usually sends me an email with that. I believe you left a message for me Tuesday afternoon and unfortunately I missed seeing that email in my box. So I did not just pick up your, your message. So I noticed that you had called, so I apologize for not reaching out to you in regards to this case. So hopefully the presentation given today will help at least give you a good understanding of what's being proposed. Next slide, please. Reasons to approve, again, I believe is consistent with the West Suburban Area Plan and Legacy 2030. Does meet the area plan recommendations for pedestrian oriented site layout and building design. Proposes additional buffer yard and screening for the JSL zone residential properties, including the church. Proposes additional stormwater management condition. Request uses in line with the area plan recommendation for commercial uses. It is a low traffic generator as stated before, once it's fully operational, it usually have about 30 daily trips. It is secure and a controlled access facility. These type of facilities are a quiet neighbor. It looks, and it looks like an office. So you don't have the traffic generation. You don't have the hours of parking behind a building and access and so it's controlled. We did, as mentioned by Gary, we did work with planning staff on the site plan, the building, how that would look. And of course, whittled down the proposed uses, kind of more in consideration with what's in the Gordon Manor Activity Zone. And staff does recommend approval. Also want to mention in the neighborhood outreach, Mr. John Reese had met again with Ms. Johnson who lives behind the property from a phone call and we received an email from her, her comments and stuff that we had received in our neighborhood outreach report. And those were the questions that we addressed from her. He had also met, I believe, with the Trinity United Methodist Church on June 17th. He met with Reverend Miller and Reverend Nelson and then the board chair, Mr. Bill Davis, and they were supportive of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you, at this time, if you have them. And I'll, we'll open it up to Mr. Bennett, Mr. Dormand or Mr. Reese for any, any further comments. Thank you.
A minute 45.
A question, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dickey, will there be any discharge of stormwater to the north?
Yes, there will be.
Do you know what percentage of quantity?
That has not been fully designed at this point, but we are, again, as stated, working to see how much we can take out towards Country Club to reduce that amount of discharge and look at how we can hold that amount of discharge so it comes out not all at once onto the property owners behind that location. Two, two main property, yeah, two main properties owners that are affected are really the two that are right behind the site. So that would be, have been Ms. Johnson and Mr. and Mrs. Beamer as the flow kind of goes in between their two, two houses.
Have you talked with those property owners about the concerns that others have had of discharge across their property lines?
And Ms. Johnson had mentioned that was a concern because she knows what comes off currently at this point, and that has been discussed with her, what's coming across from her property. So anything that comes from this site would go across her property.
And has there been any discussion of mitigation of that?
Yeah, and that's where we came to the agreement of looking at how we could probably do like more of a level spreader to spread that out so it's not so concentrated coming on to her, her property. And then also with the 50-year storm condition that we have managed that above and beyond what the minimum standards are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Clarence, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dickey, will there be outside, I may have missed in the presentation, but will there be vehicular storage, RVs, boats?
No, there's no, no outdoor storage. It's all internal to the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Chris mentioned, I think we have, Chris, what was the remaining time left?
A minute and 40 seconds or something like.
Okay. Is there still other folks signed up as proponents? I don't know if any of those folks care to speak in addition to Luke's comments.
This is Jamie Bennett. I'm resident here in Winston and one of the, one of the petitioners. You know, I just wanted to say that.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Bennett, could you give your address, please, and zip code?
Yes, certainly. I apologize. I live at 125 Northwest View, 27104.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so I actually, I butt Country Club Road myself, very familiar with the corridor. We've been doing this business for a long time and I just want to say I'm, you know, a resident. I want to make this look good for the community. It's important, you know, that we can showcase our best efforts and then hopefully, you know, I think Luke did a great job presenting, but hopefully everybody can see that we're putting our best foot forward aesthetically and integrate with the community because, because the community is our customer. You know, it's, it's a localized business and I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And Chris, any time left?
Minute 15.
Minute 15, going once, going twice. Anybody else care to speak in support of this request? Doesn't, doesn't look like it, Mr. Chairman. So if you're ready, we can now turn to the opponents.
Yes, sir.
We have three speakers, Mr. Nguyen, Emily Bickle and Tom Walter. I believe Emily Bickle was the first person to join the meeting, so we'll start with her, then we'll go with Mr. Nguyen second and Tom Walter third. And a reminder, there's a total of 12 minutes for the three of you to use. So Emily, if you're with us, you can unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record and begin your remarks. I see you're in the meeting. You may be muted.
Just so you know, whenever she came in, she was having issues with connecting with volume and brought in a second device with audio, I should say, with the first device and came in with a second one, but now she's only in here with one device, so.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you are.
Yes. Okay, sorry. It's, this is not my PC or headset. Sorry about that. I am Emily Bickle. I live at 3830 Cavalier Drive, 27104. You can see on the map, we are corner to corner with this property that's suggesting being rezoned. We're next door to Willa and John, Willa and John Beamer. And first of all, we'd like to object to the lack of effort to replace the neighborhood meeting with any additional public notification or forums for neighbors to comment and suggest in the future that the city consider posting on the multiple social media platforms they use to keep residents informed about rezoning. I've posted just a couple of days ago about this on the next door site and got several feedback comments of people who are opposed to this. We also, there've been numerous issues so far with the property that's already there. There've been zoning enforcement issues with this shopping center next door to the proposed rezoning that still haven't been resolved. Even back in 2015, the first time that this property we're talking about now was rezoned. 30 people came to the neighborhood meeting for that and had voiced concerns about outdoor music and noise, such as what comes from CrossFit behind the Dollar General Shopping Center next door. That's not even zoned for outdoor recreation. And we've been trying to get this resolved with the zoning department for a year now. Even during the pandemic, when gyms are supposedly closed, we've still been woken up by 6:00 AM tire flipping. So we're really unhappy to see that the proposed rezoning for this property would also include outdoor recreation as a use. We would strenuously object to that. We also get the feeling that, you know, from the looks of what's being proposed, that no one is, in city government is paying much attention to you or cares much about the development of this area. I'm not sure why pedestrian traffic keeps getting mentioned because I really don't see anyone walking to a storage facility. This is one of the possible uses that was approved in the 2015 rezoning when the property owner had originally promised to limit the uses of property, which they're now going back on, was a dry cleaner. So that was approved by both the planning board and the city back then. And at that time, there were already three dry cleaning solvent cleanup act programs in and around the intersection of Gordon Drive and Country Club Road because there is a substantial amount of dry cleaning solvent contamination here. This is one of the reasons that we're very concerned about runoff and the amount of impervious It was just stated a few minutes ago that there will be runoff from this. The groundwater is contaminated in this area and at the shopping center next door where there was a dry cleaners, according to the North Carolina DEQ contractors who have visited us and done testing in our house. The runoff is actually, the solvents that are in the water and the soil are actually affecting the in, have been detected in the indoor air in our basement. I know they've visited other neighbors of ours. I'm not sure what their results are. They haven't updated their webpage with all of the relevant documentation, but having this much impervious area is a really serious concern for us. As for the 40-foot buffer between the back and the property, looking at the maps that are available on the property tax site, if you measure, there's also a 40-foot buffer existing at the shopping center next door. We can tell you from experience, it really doesn't block any noise at all. It's, it's poorly maintained and not very effective. We're concerned about a number of issues here, obviously, so I don't want to take up all the time going through all of them. But even if the storage facility is relatively quiet, I mean, it's not really what we'd like to see as a neighborhood business. It doesn't really promote a walkable business area. It seems a bit extremely large for adjoining directly to single-family residential property. But one of our biggest concerns is that this also opens the door for an even less desirable use in the future if this rezoning is approved. So we would like to know if the developer would be willing to take any of these uses off the table, like saying, agreeing not to have any outdoor recreational use, agreeing not to put a dry cleaners there, considering an actual physical barrier either, on either side of the 40-foot buffer area? I mean, is that something that would be at all possible? And I don't want to take all the other speakers' time, so anyone else who is in opposition and had something to say? Ken, please go ahead now.
This is Tom Walter. If I'm allowed to speak out of chair, I can speak now or I can wait. I was third in line.
Whoever speaks, there's five minutes and 15 seconds left.
Okay, the, I agree with Emily 100%. She sounds very knowledgeable on the history of the, the property. I don't find this structure to be something that is community oriented and the Gordon Manor Business Center currently houses, you know, retail and service businesses that support this small kind of a borough of Winston-Salem. A large two-story above ground, one-story below ground storage facility, I feel is in the interest of being built here, but to support other communities of Winston-Salem, primarily to the east, going quickly into Buena Vista. Businesses being plunked down here in our neighborhood to support other neighborhoods. Luke, you're correct. I did give you a call. Wish I'd heard back from you. I did not, but I do like the way you quickly skimmed over the meditation garden, excuse me, in the right rear of the property. In my opinion, nothing like meditating next to a giant two-story storage structure. Certainly not a community type project. And Mr. Gary Roberts, who also mentioned would not be a typical use for a plot such as this, and I agree 100%. I have, it's obviously a commercial part, the Gordon Manor Shopping Strip, but this is not commercial in the sense of community and neighborhood, which Gordon Manor or South Fork, as I call it, it is, the services up there are great. You can walk to, they provide you, you know, from haircuts to food, to convenience stores, to the diner. It, it's a community center and I think there is a much better use for that piece of land to serve and develop this community. And I think that covers my notes, other than is really completely surrounded by, I guess, what's called RS9 and the one RS18 multi-use residential, but it's all residential surrounding the property, except for that little strip mall, which is a community service business type strip mall. The, a storage facility, and I'm speaking fast just because I know the clock's ticking, a storage facility in my mind is much more of an industrial type facility, not something you plunk down in the center of a community, a neighborhood. And I think that's it.
Mr. Walter, can we get your address and zip code for the record, please?
I apologize. Tom Walter, address 125 South Gordon Drive, 27104.
Thank you. There's two, two minutes and 25 seconds left. And Mr. Chairman, our last speaker signed up in opposition is Mr. Nguyen, I believe, who is still with us. So Mr. Nguyen, if you're there, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Philip Nguyen, I live at 213 Kyle Road, which is outside the 500-foot rim, but I do go to Trinity United Methodist Church and I have three little concerns. My wife does a lot of work in the prayer garden and it's serene and nice to sit there and look back. And if this gets built, we'll be looking at at least. look back, and if this gets built, we'll be looking at at least a five-foot wall in the back of the building. Also, from the church parking lot, we'll be looking at the side of the building, at the parking lot, and the dumpster. And if you look at the side of the dumpster, where the truck pulls in to pick up, the dumpster is facing the side of the columbarium. Also, and this, the taste of the property is, there's a 250-year-old oak tree on the property, and the horticulturist, arborist, whoever, has said that is one of the oldest white oak trees in Forsouth County, and I don't see it on the plans anyplace unless it's cut up and made into flooring or paneling. What's going to happen to it? That's all my concerns. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Got a minute left.
One other quick thing on the preliminary drawings that was sent out by the Stimel Property Development. You know, in the lower right-hand of the visual, the drawing, it says, "This is a preliminary site plan, limited information, therefore, it may not reflect the actual site features. No site research has been conducted. Site conditions may change significantly." I feel that this is an investment for whatever business is getting into it. I don't think they have any interest in the community here, and I think that needs to be taken into serious consideration. Emily or Philip, I appreciate y'all joining. Nobody else did. You can call or text me at 336-816-6944. I couldn't find others in the area that were willing to join the call, but just giving you my information if you want to reach out to me. Thank you.
Got five seconds left.
Okay, in five seconds, I'd like to say, if this doesn't get built after the, if this is approved for the zoning change and then what's proposed doesn't get built, do the neighbors have any recourse?
The zoning, if it is approved, the zoning stays in place, but that's not to say that a future developer could not submit another rezoning request as we have before us today.
So, Mr. Chairman, you may want to go ahead and close the public here and tidy that up.
All right. So we're out of time for both sides, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can get back to the question that's on the floor and any other questions that need to be answered before we move forward to discussion and motion.
So I can circle back to the question that Ms. Bickel just asked. The request before you, before the board this afternoon is for the storage facility designed in the exact manner shown on that site plan. If that is ultimately approved by city council, that's what's got to be built. And basically, it wouldn't get permits for anything to go on that site unless it matches the plan that is before you, before the board and the council today. So, so that is kind of the measure that is in place to make sure what's, what's there gets built. What Gary mentioned is, is if for some reason this, you know, got approved and the deal fell through and it got sold to a different property owner down the line somewhere, and that person wanted to develop the property differently, they would have to come back through the exact same process that we're going through now, where signs will be posted, letters will be sent, advertisements will be made, public hearing, neighborhood meetings, all those things will be part of that. That would be a separate rezoning request. So I want to go ahead and address that and clear, clear that matter off.
Well, the reason I was asking is because the, you know, it was rezoned in 2015, and the, what was proposed then, I don't know if they had a particular site plan yet, but that was not what ended up being built, and now we're here with another additional rezoning. But it's on top of the one that was previously approved and stayed in place, even though that wasn't, what was proposed wasn't built.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll add, I'll add one more, one more comment to maybe kind of clarify this a little further. So, so the process that we're in now is exactly what would take place. Zoning runs with the land, so, so once council approved that rezoning in 2015, that is a zoning that has stayed in place throughout time, and it's still in place today, and it will stay in place up until a point when another rezoning is approved that would supersede that. And so, so again, it would be the same process, it's kind of what we're going through now.
So if this, I'm sorry if I'm being a bit slow to understand this, but so if this rezoning is approved, but the storage facility does not get built, it would still be rezoned to this zoning that's being proposed?
Correct. If the rezoning request is before the board today, ultimately, if it's ultimately approved by city council, essentially, the, really, the only thing that can go on that site is the storage facility designed in the manner proposed on the site plan, and that's it. And if that were not to get built, it would have to come back through the same process that we're, we're basically going through right now.
Okay, so it would revert to the old zoning if the storage facility is not built?
No. And, and, Mr. Chairman, we might want to kind of, I'll try to answer this one more time. Basically, if the storage building doesn't get built, the site plan that is on the table today would still be the plan of record. And so if, if, if the developers here walked away and there was another developer out there that said, "I want to build the exact same thing," they could come in and build the exact same thing. If another developer picks it up down the road and says, "I don't want to build that. I want to build a, a different building in a different configuration with a different use," that developer would be coming back through the exact same process that we're going through today.
Once the property is rezoned, anybody that wants to build within that zoning classification would be allowed to do that, is that correct?
So, if the property is rezoned for what is before you today, then, then that is the development that can take place on that land, and if it's these guys or a different developer down the road, the development is, it would have to look just, it would have to be built as per the plans today. And, and, Mr. Chairman?
So, so, yes, so, so the public hearing is closed. So if someone has, one of the board members has a question to a petitioner, that's different, but as far as just speaking, I have closed the public hearing. So, thank you so much. All right, so, planning board, would you like any further discussion? Does someone have a motion?
This, this is Clarence, Mr. Chairman. The, the renderings are a part of it, right? They, they've submitted them as part of the petition. Okay. And Luke, I just got a question. Can you, you guys got any heartache over eliminating outdoor entertainment as a permitted use and dry cleaners as a permitted use?
I don't think we have an issue with that. I'll defer to Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, no, we have no issue eliminating those.
Okay, then, I'd like to make a motion, and then we'll open up, we'll see what happens with my motion, but I move the planning board's.
Chair, if I may, this is Desmond Corley. I just want to kind of point out that if they are speaking about eliminating the specific use for dry cleaners, that actually fits under a category of uses, Services A. And so we would need to specify that that particular use is not allowed under Services A, or that they would eliminate the entire category of uses, Services A.
It sounded like what was being stated was dry cleaner. So, Mr. Lamb, if you could word it such that it's dry cleaner and not that entire category, please.
Desmond, I may not know exactly how to.
Clarence, let me help you out here. I think what you're trying to say is, the use Services A shall be restricted to not allow the use dry cleaners as a sub-use in there.
Or outdoor recreation.
And, and, and recreation services, outdoor was the other use. So, so those two uses would not be allowed, and staff can provide the technical language. If, if this makes it through, goes to council, we'll clean that up for you.
Okay. What, do you mean to make my motion now before I forget how I'm supposed to oppose it, or do you want to have some commentary, Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion?
No, sir. I think, I don't see anyone moving, so let's make the motion if you're ready.
Okay, I move it to the planning board. Find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan with the elimination of the outdoor entertainment, the fitness activities, I'm not sure what.
Recreation services, outdoor.
Okay, that, that, that use, that permitted use excluded, as well as, however I'm supposed to phrase to eliminate.
And Services A should be further restricted to not allow laundromats, dry cleaners.
Okay, that's, that's my motion.
The motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
I'll second, Jason Grubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Donegan.
I, I just had a few comments to make. I, I don't see this as consistent with the comprehensive plan, primarily because of some of the comments that we've heard from the opponents, especially the comments that this is not community-oriented, it's more industrial-looking, it, it's not neighborhood-scale in terms of its size, and it's not really pedestrian-friendly in the terms of it's, I think Ms. Bickel said, "No one will walk to a storage facility." And I think that we ought to reserve these neighborhood business areas to be neighborhood-serving. And that's why I don't think it's, 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 fits with the plan, with the comprehensive plan. I also see a problem with the change in zoning to GB, and it was pointed out in the staff report that this would be the only GB zoning within this neighborhood activity center. GB is a very intense zoning, and while this particular request is a low-traffic generator, and they are making an effort aesthetically, I, I agree to that, I do think that just the fact of this being GB is problematic, because being so close to residential is problematic because we've already ramped up the intensity. We've taken, in 2015, a RS9 property and added it to LBL, and now we're taking LBL to GB with this request. And what's to prevent someone to, you know, want to do more GB if we agree to this GB within this activity center? I just see this as problematic for ramping up the intensity here, and, and, so anyway, that's just my, my thoughts on it. But I also wanted to get an answer to Mr. Nguyen's question about the 250-year-old treasure tree, whether that's going to be, whether that's proposed to remain on, on site.
Ms. Donegan, I think I can answer that. Back in 2015, when this case was originally rezoned, the applicant, and I believe his name was Emory Pike, and I may be wrong on that, he himself volunteered that condition. So, so that was not a staff-imposed condition. He volunteered that, and so we included it with the request. What, what is before you today, and I'll let Mr. Dickey jump in if I'm wrong, but what is before you today would not preserve that tree, and I'll let Mr. Dickey correct me if I'm, I'm missing that.
Yes, Mr. King, that is, that is correct. That old white oak is approximately in the location where the retaining wall is, next to the little island that has the, the parking lot tree on it. So to accommodate the grade, and then given the size and the age of that tree, and what this proposes, there's, there's no way to really retain it, because all the disturbance that's going to take place under its root system. So that tree is proposed to be removed.
I've got that.
If, if she's finished, if I could come in. I, I think Mr. Roberts' presentation was exactly saying why we shouldn't do this, because he kept emphasizing that this was low-traffic, you know, all the things that you are, are antithetical to what we say is a neighborhood activity center. And I just have to appeal to my compatriots here on the, on the board, that we have to look at planning. Storage facilities do not need high visibility in the middle of activity. We need to step up for the community and say, "Look, yes, we need to place into that neighborhood something that generates activity, encourages pedestrian activity, and, and, and some kind of development along those lines." Now, on the surface of it, though, as, as Ms. Donegan said, how can we approve general business right up against residential property like this is? We're supposed to have some kind of step-down in the midst of this, and it was a compromise to put limited business there, and then we're coming back to the neighborhood and saying, "General business?" I think we're, we're overstepping what we should do with, with zoning, in my view. There are other options for storage facilities other than being in the middle of activity centers. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add, and I'll do so real, real briefly, is to say that if you ever want the best of this kind of product, you've got the team before you this evening that does the best work you're ever going to find. Having said that, I will also say, as an urban planner and, and a neighborhood proponent, I would, I would never put a mini-storage facility in the middle of a neighborhood activity center, just like I would not put it adjacent to the outfield of Truist Baseball Park. I think we need to step back as a board, look from about a five-mile up-looking-down lens, and rethink what we think is appropriate locationally for this product. There's a demand for the product. This is not the place for it.
So I, I would just add, what I'm hearing, this, we've had multiple storage facility cases recently. What I'm hearing the board say is that maybe we don't like where storage facilities fit in our overall zoning scheme, more so, that, that seems to be what I'm hearing as the problem more than the individual cases. And I don't necessarily disagree with, with some of what Jack said, nor some of what George said, but also, you know, the, the market, the market drives developers' decisions to put things certain places, and, you know, this is more expensive real estate than a lot of other places where I've heard during our discussion, proposed for storage facilities to go. And I keep hearing there's no reason for it to be there, but the market seems to be dictating that there is, and, and I'm, I'm not necessarily arguing for putting it here, but I, I do think it's, it's a little bit, I, I, I don't know that you can make the leap that it doesn't make sense to put it there, because the market drives these decisions, and people wouldn't be putting them there if there wasn't a demand to have them there.
Mr. Chairman, i- if I can have just a minute here, there's been a lot of discussion, and I think it's important to kind of just talk a little bit about staff review of this, because I think there have been a lot of good points made. One is, when we reviewed this case, we, we have an obligation to make sure we are treating applicants consistently. And as our staff reviewed this case, we looked back on previous requests that were similar to this. We had, if you remember, probably within the last two to three years, a request at the Hillcrest Activity Center to take that corner parcel, and it was a site plan amendment. It still came back through this process and convert that to a storage facility, and that was supported by staff, the board, and council, and it was ultimately approved. More recently, we had at the Robin Hood Road Activity Center, which is, if you're Robin Hood Village, northern edge of Meadow Art Drive in that area, is another activity center, and we had a similar request that converted some office buildings to one of these indoor self-storage facilities. Staff supported that, the board supported that, and it was ultimately approved by the elected officials. And so as we looked at this, we kind of made similar recommendations in the past, and I think the thing that we looked at on this case was to try to make sure that what we were coming up with, or what was, what was in this activity center, we tried to make the architecture as solid as possible. We wanted to make sure there was a reasonable setback and buffer against the neighbors to the north, and, and what is basically before you today is, is the same condition that was there in 2015 attached to that LBL rezoning. So the, the treatment along that northern line is, is similar to what was there before. I, I would say this, I think this whole issue of storage services does warrant some additional discussion down the road, and, and perhaps, is, is GB a district? Could it be allowed in LB? Should it have to be in GB or HB? I, I don't know today, and that's a bigger discussion, but I think it's something that we may revisit down the road to see, to see how that works, because I think the nature of self-storage uses has changed significantly from 1994, where that use was put in the UDO in the zoning districts where it's allowed. You didn't really have stealth storage, completely enclosed buildings that looked, and looked like office buildings. You didn't have that in 1994, and you do now. And so that may be something where down the road, staff looks at it, and, and, and maybe there's a split-off use, maybe we think about where they're allowed, but I do think that's something that, that warrants some discussion. So, again, I just want So again, I just want to mention that for a little bit of context to let you know where staff was coming from. That's the end of my comments.
Even staff's inserting themselves into this discussion. There are alternatives for buildings like this. You can use the primary level or the street level for retail and put storage behind it. There are very creative ways to do this that don't have to intrude in activity centers and decrease activity. So we're not seeing a creative proposal in this particular proposal anyway.
So if we could, I think this discussion is good. I think there needs to be further discussion based upon what I'm hearing. But we need to continue with 3449. And then we can talk about designs and everything in work session and what needs to happen.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for a clarification on the motion that was on the floor, I believe we may have gotten motions out of order. I believe that the motion that was made by Mr. Lamb was for the actual zoning, and we haven't considered the consistency with the plan yet. So I just wanted to throw that out there before you called for a vote on that. We would need to probably do the consistency one as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'm sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion that the planning board find that the request is... Well, prior to that, one comment, please. And that's self-storage truly is a different animal now. It really doesn't belong in GB. The industry itself says that it has traffic counts, has the lowest traffic counts of any kind of business except for a graveyard. I think that's part of their spiel or whatever. But, you know, another beautiful thing of these more modern projects is adaptive reuse. 20 years from now, when that land is more valuable or whatever else, you've got a easily, a building that can be easily transitioned into an office building. Now, maybe you don't want an office building there either, but that is the beauty of these new, you know, these new types of facilities. So I would highly recommend that staff look at changing where self-storage belongs as far as these new, modern types of developments. Anyway, my motion is that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Second. That was a motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, I believe. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. King, will you call the roll?
George Bryan.
No.
Melinda Donegan.
No.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Ms. Smith, you're on mute. Did something happen?
Something's going on here. Okay, you got me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my answer is no.
So that's four to four on consistency.
All right, and then, Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend approval of W. 3449.
With the changes from before?
With the changes I used earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Second. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
No.
Melinda Donegan.
No.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
No.
Jack Steelman.
No.
So that is four to four. It will go to council with no recommendation. Mr. Chairman, if I could, while Ms. Bickel is on the line, I do want to let her know in relation to the complaint that she had regarding the outdoor, the indoor recreation services use that is doing things outdoor. We have actually sent them a notice of violation and begun fining them. So we have not been ignoring that.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item B seven on your agenda, which is UDO CC four. Amy is probably pulling up the slideshow. Steve is going to run through this briefly. You'll remember we briefed this text amendment for you at your work session. So I think Amy's getting it pulled up, and I will turn it over to Steve Smotherman.
Okay, this is good pre-evening, Commissioner Members. This is, I'm going to give a brief overview of UDO CC four, which is a text amendment to add heavy commercial uses to the limited industrial and general industrial zoning districts. It adds outdoor storage area requirements to manufacturing B uses and consolidates definitions of manufacturing A and manufacturing B into one consistent countywide definition. Next slide, please. As you know, there have been recent rezoning quests in the past couple of years for heavy commercial uses and formerly industrial zone properties near South Stratford Road. The planning board suggested staff prepare an ordinance amendment allowing some heavy retail uses in industrial districts. And while investigating that, staff also recognized the need for further differentiating manufacturing B uses from manufacturing A uses by allowing screened outdoor storage areas. Next slide, please. Six commercial uses are proposed for the LI and GI districts. There are car wash, a truck rush, furniture and home furnishing store, an institutional vocational training facility such as industries for the blind, motorcycle dealerships, retail nursery lawn and garden supply stores, and outdoor display retail, which includes automotive sales. Next slide, please. And in revising the definitions for manufacturing A and manufacturing B uses, there's been three levels of industrial intensity created. One is that manufacturing A has no outdoor storage. Manufacturing B uses is proposed to have outdoor storage that is screened from public streets. And manufacturing C, which are heavy industrial uses, does not require screening requirements as a group of uses, but those do individually have separate screening requirements. And manufacturing C uses include quarries and salvage yards and other high-intensity industrial uses. Next slide, please. The proposed screening requirements for outdoor storage areas for manufacturing B uses should be located to the sides or rear of a principal building or not visible from public rights ways. Where they are visible, they need to be screened by opaque materials such as masonry or stone, a minimum of six feet in height when visible from public rights ways, or screened by type three buffer yard. Which you see on the slide, we, staff has revised slightly since the work session to make that a 20-foot wide type three buffer yard, which has the highest level of plantings. That is the purpose that that has been done. And it doesn't leave, they can do more than a 20-foot width if they desire. And then lastly, if the storage area is more than 500 feet from public right of way, it is exempted from having to do screening requirements. Next slide, please. And then the final amendment is to make the city and county definitions of manufacturing A, manufacturing B uses consistent into one countywide definition. The only distinction was that indoor agriculture was permitted in this city Winston Salem definition, but was not included for the county because the recent amendment to allow urban agriculture was approved only for Winston Salem. So this one, these revisions include both the city and county and making these definitions consistent will certainly simplify the UDO. And next slide, and staff recommends approval of this UDO code amendment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the board? Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, you don't have any speakers here, but you probably do need to close the public, open and close the public hearing.
Okay, so let me do it this way. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
There's not.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC four. This is Clarence.
Second by Mr. Lamb.
Second by Mr. Steelman. Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
George Bryan.
Yes.
Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
Yes.
It's eight to zero. And that will take us to our, the next item on our agenda, which is item B eight. And that is another text amendment, UDO CC five. This is another one that we briefed at your work session. I think David Reed will just very quickly summarize this for you. I think Amy's getting the show pulled up, and I'll turn it over to David.
Okay, I'll try and talk as fast as Steve did. We'll see how it goes. Planning staff is the petitioner for this case. Its request is to extend the timeframe in which the HRC shall act upon complete applications for COAs. Right now, the UDO requires the HRC to act on COA applications within 120 days of submission. With the emergence of COVID-19, it's limited the HRC's ability to hold regular in-person meetings. And the state legislature recently enacted a new rule requiring all parties with standing agree to holding a virtual public hearing. So that really means if we don't reach out to everyone who might have standing, they could contest the case if they, or they could say they want an in-person meeting. So we just have in-person meetings. So in summary, go ahead. The general statutes allow it to be up to 180 days. We just don't have that in the UDO. And we have canceled meetings, and two applications were automatically approved in June. Luckily, the both cases met the guidelines that it wasn't a problem that the guy approved, but we've already run into the time crunch because of COVID. So we would recommend approval of changing it from 120 days to 180 days. I'm trying to ensure any questions there.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
How about this comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I would like to say that we are in a very, very unique times and set of conditions that calls exactly for what is being requested. I would plead with staff to use their best intent and best spirit to make 180-day wait happen only when it's an emergency and not as a standard day-to-day practice.
Point taken.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Well, I need to be sure, is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, there's no one signed up to speak on this.
All right, so I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC five.
Second.
Our motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Bryan. Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
George Bryan. Melinda Donegan.
Yes.
Jason Grubbs.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks.
Yes.
Clarence Lamb.
Yes.
Chris Leek.
Yes.
Brenda Smith.
Yes.
Jack Steelman.
I think I just heard someone talking about not having sopranos. Is somebody...
Jack, can you, I didn't hear you. Can you repeat your vote, please? Yes, I vote yes, please. Thank you. Eight to zero on that item. And I think that brings us to the last item on your agenda, which is item B nine, and that is a public hearing on your downtown Winston-Salem Streetscape Master Plan. And Amy Crum is going to pull the show up and then present it herself. So Amy, if you want to go ahead and begin.
Good evening. Just a little background on the project. Both the downtown plan and the Legacy 2030 update have a recommendation regarding streetscape designs. The downtown plan recommends that a streetscape design standard be created and implemented within downtown. And Legacy recommends and encourages designs that promote pedestrian-friendly streetscapes in downtown and the central city. Center city. In 2016, staff developed the downtown streetscape report in which we looked at various streetscape amenities and elements to really prove the point that these standards are necessary as right now there is a mixed bag of design elements. There's multiple types of lighting and multiple types of sidewalk materials used, amongst other things. In 2017, the request for qualifications for consultant was put out. We had about 11 entries for that RFQ. And in 2018, MIG was selected and began work on the project. In 2019, public outreach was held and the plan was finalized. Here's a project boundary. This is a general boundary. It's eight streets to the north, Patterson Avenue to the east, Business 40, Salem Parkway to the south, and Broad Street to the west. The process began with surveys, both online and in-person surveys. There was an interactive online survey where folks could provide their comments on a digital map. Over 1,000 people participated in that process with over 7,000 individual map responses. We also held pop-up meetings at the Central Library and other destinations downtown to provide folks an opportunity to give comments on those survey questions in case he didn't have access to an online forum. Through those surveys, the ranking of streetscape improvements was gained. Street lighting was the number one item requested, followed by street trees and then spaces for public programs and festivals, public art, and ways to express the story of Winston Salem. We also had multiple stakeholder meetings. We had a staff advisory committee meeting that met five times throughout this process that included various members of city staff from various agencies. And we also had members from NCDOT and the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership on that committee. We also met with downtown leadership to provide a visioning session, as well as hold stakeholder meetings with folks to address accessibility as well as the artist and creative class. And we also had separate meetings with Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership throughout this process, both through individual meetings with board members as well as with the actual full board and their planning and infrastructure subcommittee. And then we held three rounds of interactive community workshops, both for lunch meetings and evening meetings. And through this, we had about 140, 150 people participate. And through all that public input, they created a vision for downtown. I won't go through each and every one of these, but basically they wanted to burst downtown with economic development that's well-maintained and connected to neighborhoods with different methods of socializing and with slower and calmer traffic. Through this process, the consultant was tasked at creating a typology for the various streets within downtown. You may remember through that downtown street report that was done by staff, we prioritize downtown streets based off primary, secondary, and tertiary, really based off their level of use. Here, the consultant has proposed categorizing the streets based off their function. So destination streets, which are shown in red, these are really act as are basically the destination downtown. These are the places where people come to gather and socialize. Fourth Street and Trade Street are primary streets for that. Community connector streets, which are shown in yellow, are really the streets that are used to get into and out of and through downtown. And these should be designed in a manner for all users, whether it be pedestrian, cyclists, transit, or motorists. Neighborhood streets were shown in blue. This really speaks to Holly Avenue neighborhood as that is a very residential area, and those streets should respect that residential character. We also had urban flex... We also had urban flex streets. Think of Church Street and Chestnut Street. These streets don't really fit into one of these categories because it's sort of in transition. And so they may become community connector streets, or they may become destinations in their own right, like Seventh Street might in the future. The overarching themes when creating the design guidelines and the palette of elements were, one, have it high-quality, focus on some key elements that serve the essential needs. Also make sure that they are context-sensitive and timeless, that they respond to the economic, cultural, and historic nature of downtown, and to really celebrate those destination streets within downtown. Create a cohesive downtown identity. This is something that we're sort of lacking now with our elements being very sort of mismatched, or hodgepodge is another way to put it, to creating that cohesive set of furnishings. Making sure that the elements that we do use are multipurpose and multifunctional. Downtown has very limited right-of-ways. Basically, the right-of-way that we see is what we have, and there's no really ability to expand that right-of-way. So we really need to make sure that the elements that we're using serve multiple purposes and have multiple benefits. And also, at the end, we also want to make sure that everything is maintenance-friendly. All elements can withstand wear and tear and can be maintained by city or a partner agency. And the plan does provide general design recommendations, but it also provides specific recommendations for the palette of materials. And this goes to softscape elements like trees and plantings. There is a tree planting plan. And within the document, that specifies which trees should be planted on which street, as well as there's a hardscape elements palette that revolves around paving, sidewalks, crosswalks, things of that nature, as well as furnishings. So seating, lighting, trash cans, bike racks, those sorts of items. And then other elements, sort of multi-sensorial elements, really dictated trying to create an iconic atmosphere. If you can think of a good example, this would be looking at the wind chimes that are on the light poles in Fourth Street, in Trade Street, on Trade Street. Those sorts of elements that really give a sense of iconic nature within downtown and also use of public art within downtown. That's the end of my presentation. I will say that we have heard from Jason Field, the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership. He did not send an official letter of support, but he did send an email stating that he is supportive of the plan.
Thank you so much, Amy. Any discussion right now regarding the plan? I know we've seen this before, but it's always good to get a refresher. It looks like a lot more work has been put into it. Thank you so kindly. Any discussion?
Chairman, I will let you know there are no speakers here signed up for this case.
All right, there are no speakers, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. And would anyone like to make a motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, a move by Mr. Lamb? Motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
Second.
That was, I'm sorry.
Jason Grubbs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grubbs. Second by Mr. Grubbs. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make one brief comment.
Yes, sir.
Apologize for the time. As I said during our workshop meeting, there's some brilliant design suggestions contained in in a lot of, lot of work that has gone into this. However, in the absence of an implementation plan, I don't want to see us setting ourselves up for conflict. I had a great conversation this morning about that with Aaron. He assures me these standards need to be adopted to serve as the foundation for the next step, which is to put together with additional community input an implementation strategy, how and where it gets used and who pays for what and so forth. And I will say that I will strongly support tonight's approval of these standards with the understanding that they do not become regulatory until everything gets qualified. That's really important.
Mr. Steelman's correct. That's exactly it. We will be, after this plan is adopted by council, staff will begin that very discussion that Mr. Steelman mentioned with the downtown stakeholders and community to put together a text amendment that puts regulatory measures in the U D O based on these standards. So that will be a whole separate process. You will be seeing us bringing something back to you on that. That's gonna take a while, especially if we're still dealing with COVID for an extended period of time because we're gonna want to get a lot of feedback and input. But don't forget about that. We're gonna be bringing that back to you in the future.
All right. Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
That's eight to zero. And, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to staff report. And we will be very brief. I realize the hour. Desmond, can you quickly provide a overview of the September caseload?
Sure, this will be brief. There is one subdivision, one preliminary subdivision that the board will need to review next month, and one final development plan that the board will also be reviewing accompanies a zoning conversion for a property that was recently annexed. That's it.
Thank you, Desmond. I will mention to the board, you know, that Johnny Seeger is not on the board, and city council took consideration of a replacement for Johnny. Monique McCray was confirmed by the city council at their last meeting. So as you guys know, that will now go to the county commissioners for their confirmation. And once they take action, we will do an orientation with Monique, and we will get her ready to start serving on the board with with you guys. So that hopefully will be coming soon. Just want to let you know that. We will be canceling your August work session because a lot of the things that we have cooking are not quite cooked enough to bring to you. So we'll be giving you the rest of August off. You've earned it tonight with a three-hour meeting, so we'll give you that off. Amy wanted to mention some upcoming events with respect to public art. Amy, if you want to mention that?
Yeah, we are doing five public input meetings coming up over the next two weeks for the Public Art twenty twenty to twenty thirty Master Plan. And three of those meetings will be in-person meetings. The first one will be next Tuesday from noon to one-thirty at Patterson Memorial Library. And then we have one on Thursday at August twentieth from six to seven-thirty at the Anderson Community Center. And then one Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, from Haynes, at the Haynes-Hoosier Community Center, and that's from six to seven-thirty. And then we also are having, holding two virtual meetings. One is Thursday, August twentieth, from one to two. And the other one is Thursday, August twenty-seventh, from six to seven. All of this information is available online on the Public Art Commission's website, which is cityofws.org-publicart. You can see the plan there. There's a survey available for folks who cannot make a meeting. But if you do wish to attend the meeting, you do have to sign up, both for the virtual ones and for the in-person ones, so that we have a proper accounting of people and make sure that we meet the governor's requirements for public gatherings.
And Amy can email those information out to the board if you didn't catch all that. We'll get that out to you as an email. So Amy, if you want to, if you could do that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you.
The lightning and the thunder you hear in the background must have preceded the last thing I've got to mention to you on the staff report, which is at Tuesday's General Government Committee, the committee asked staff to go back and provide updated and new research on accessory dwelling units. And you remember, we had a lot of discussion about that in 2017. The, just a quick origin of where this came from. The Affordable Housing Coalition has been at work for maybe not quite two years, maybe a year and so change. And they presented their recommendations to the General Government Committee. And one of their recommendations is that the council revisit their policy on accessory dwelling units. So as a result of that discussion, the committee has directed staff to compile some research, find out who's doing what, what's working, what's not working. So staff will be spending some time in the research mode in order to get a report back to the committee. I can't tell you when that will be right now, but I wanted to let you know that staff will be working on that per direction from the General Government Committee. And that is all I have under staff report. Here's Brenda.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all the planning board members tonight and also staff. A three-hour meeting is a long time. And if we were meeting in person, I would treat everybody to dinner, but since we're not, I hope.
Let's hold him to that. Let's hold him to that.
Tom, will you make that motion?
Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Any second?
Amen. Second.
All right, it's second. Have a good night, everybody.
Everyone's good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.